Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonzo and Morse's Parade on Antae Colorado. The acronym is AIPAC. I am the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 42, Class 42. What did we learn in Class 41? Well, we started learning about what's called the French Protectorate of 1913, with the understanding that France came over to the United States of America through all of their correspondence to let the United States of America know they're taking over the Moroccan treaties. What does that mean? They're taking over the empire. They're enforcing the treaties. That's what Morse needs to understand. How do you enforce the treaties? But what else was the French Protectorate all about of 1913? It was a corollary of the Treaty of Fairs of 1912. And the Treaty of Fairs of 1912 was a corollary of the Act of Al-Dosaras in 1906 and all the previous Moroccan treaties. So France is coming over enforcing the treaties. And what is the United States doing? Panicking. So imagine that, Morse. If France can get the United States to panic because France had control of the treaties, think about it. France is not even a party to the contract because the contract says, "Morse and the citizens of the United States of America", not France. But France was a power attorney. So imagine if the power attorney had that much power. Imagine how much power Morse had as the original parties of that treaty. Alright? So we keep talking about that today, okay? So, as we always open up, as I said, we'll keep talking about what's the purpose of AIPAC. Study session is really about Morse coming back into the constitutional principles of enforcing treaties. And the treaties talk about statehood. The treaties talk about constitutions, the well-settled principles of what's called the triple principle. Alright? So, as you can see, AIPAC has this constitution up. Why is that important to understand? Because AIPAC is following the instructions of the well-settled principles of the Act of Al-Dosaras, the triple principle, right? We have to keep maintaining that, Morse, alright? So today, what we're going to do is we're going to more or less pick up where we left off, but not so much. Okay? I'll explain. Okay, so, this is the French Protectorate of 1913. We were reading this in Class 41, right? So you gotta go back to Class 41 to get an understanding of what we first started initially reading. And we got down to a different section where we started talking about the Treaty of Madrid, Article 7 and 8, et cetera, alright? But prior to us getting to the part where we talked about Article 7 and 8 of the Treaty of Madrid, just before that, I talked about Americans. I said that Morse were not Americans, right? And I said, "Why?" I said, "Because there's no mention of Morse being Americans in the treaties." Alright, so I'd like to talk a little bit more about that today. So you remember in the document of the French Protectorate of 1913, right here in this particular section, right, we had got here February 13, 1914. Scroll down, because I want Morse to pick up right where I left off and turn to the comment that I made, right? So right here, I was talking about American proteges in that country, right? And I said, "Morse have to understand they are not Americans." The only time Morse are referred to as being Americans is when you're a protege of America. But I need to go deeper than that. I need to explain that to the Morse because the Morse have all been saying they are Moorish Americans. So we're going to talk about that today. We'll take a pause on the French Protectorate. We're going to dive into what's called, "Are Morse Americans?" "Are Morse Americans?" But really, the title is this. "The Contracting Parties Must Be Known." So we're talking about what? Treaties, right? Today, we'll talk about the enforcement of treaties. In my hand, I have four treaties, okay? So hopefully, the Morse at home can see this. I got the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1787, fully ratified. Who are the parties to this treaty? Morse and Americans, citizens of the United States of America. So who are the parties? Morse and the citizens of the United States of America, which means Morse and Americans, okay? What else we got? Alright, next contract. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836. Between who? Who are the parties? Morse and Americans, citizens of the United States of America. Okay? Who else we got? Got the Treaty of 1880, Treaty of Madrid, 1880. Who are the parties? "If-so-djuror Morse subjects, Morse and Americans, citizens of the United States of America, as well as other signatory powers", because it's a multilateral treaty, right? You got the signatory powers, which are the Christian powers. But more specifically, this is about who? Morse and Morse are now proteges, subjects of Morocco. Okay, let's continue. Act of Al-Dosaras, 1906, a Moroccan treaty. Who are the parties? Morse, if-so-djuror Morse subjects, and the signatory powers, which is the United States of America and the other signatory powers, the other colonial states, right? Who are the real parties? Morocco, Morse, United States of America, Americans, and the other signatory powers. So the parties must be known. We're talking about parties to a contract. What contract? The treaties, okay? So today, we're talking about these four treaties. In these four treaties, it never refers to Morse as being Americans unless they're saying they're proteges of America, meaning you're the property of America because you no longer have a Moorish government. You're a stateless Moor that's a protege of America. That must be understood. We're going to get into this today, alright? So right here, France is pointing out to the Morse and to the United States, what? That the Morse are proteges of America. That must be understood. So let's jump into that today, okay? So up here on the board, what I have. "The Contracting Parties Must Be Known." "Are Morse Americans?" Answer: Yes, in fact, yes. But no, in truth. You must understand the difference between fact and truth. Fact, Santa Claus is real. But in truth, he's fiction. That's the truth. Next question. "Are Morse Aboriginal to Morocco or America?" Answer: Morocco. Because America is not the original name of the land. So how can you be Aboriginal of America when that's not the original name of the land? We'll talk about that today. What else? Who are the parties to the contract? What contract? We just went over. Treaties, right? Treaties. Who are the parties? Morse and the Americans. That's the truth. We're going to break this down today because Morse needs to understand what's happening. Why are we going over this? As Morse start to come back into statehood. Morse cannot bring old paradigms into your statehood. When Morse come back and now submit and consent to the entire submission of the laws of Morocco, the laws of the empire. When Morse come back to Morocco from the abstract and from the pen legislation, you cannot be referred to yourself as Americans. I'll prove that today. Alright, let's get started. Okay. Here's all we're going to open up. Morse can look on Google and Google Moorish American Identification Cards and all kinds of cards pop up. So this is just one example that I grabbed off of Google. This is public information. As you can see, I blocked out the good Morse's name here, right? And he actually blocked out his own face, et cetera. So I chose this card because he blocked out his own face. The good brother blocked out his own face, and I blocked out his name, okay? But he had actually exposed his name on Google, alright? But I took the time to protect his privacy, okay? So what's happened? Today, we're going to talk about how Morse have these nationality cards and don't realize they're admitting to the United States that they're sovereign citizens. With these nationality cards, they're admitting to the United States that they're still part of the jurisdiction of the United States. We're going to talk about that today. We'll break it down. Just have patience with me, okay? Alright, let's get started. First things first. Let's get into some history, right? We always have to go backwards before we go forward. We gotta go back and get the proper concept through context in order for us to bring it full circle. Let's get started. Okay, mother, if I can have you start reading?
Where did Morse get the concept that Morse are Americans? Answer: Noah Webster's Dictionary, year 1828, as follows. "American adjective pertaining to America. American noun, a native of America, originally applied to the Aboriginals or copper-colored races found here by the Europeans, but now applied to the descendants of Europeans born in America."
Okay. So most Morse quote this definition all the time. My first question to the Morse is this. When it comes to the treaties, did the Morse say they were Americans because they saw that in a treaty? Or they say they're Americans because they got this from a definition from Noah Webster? And the answer is, most Morse are using this as a basis of why they're being Americans. That's the truth. Let's break this down, shall we? Where did Morse get the concept that Morse are Americans? Answer: Noah Webster's Dictionary, year 1828, as follows. "American adjective pertaining to America. American noun, a native of America." This is where Morse get caught up, right here. "A native of America." They see that right there. "A native of America." So Morse been told that a native, and you are. But you're not the native of America. Remember, Noah Webster wrote this, and we're going to find out why he wrote it like this. "Originally applied to the Aboriginals." You see this word right here? "Applied." Morse gotta learn how to read. This word "applied" to you the same way the word "black" was applied to you. Just because they applied the word "black" to you don't make you who you are. Just because they applied the word "American" to you don't make you who you are. You're going to find out here in a minute why they applied the word "American" to you. Let's continue. To the Aboriginals. So right here, it said, "Originally applied to the Aboriginals." They're telling you some truths here. "They applied the word 'America' to the Aboriginals." They applied it. That does not make you who you are. Let's continue. "Or the copper-colored races," so you know they're talking about the Morse, "found here by the Europeans, but now applied to the descendants of Europeans born in America." So first thing what I do is gotta get an understanding. America is applied to the Aboriginals. And America is what? Applied to the descendants of Europeans. Why is that? Let's find out why. Right here is a quote from George Washington. When you look up the definition "American," it has this quote, right? It says, "The name 'American' must always exalt the pride of patriotism." George Washington. Where did they get that from? See, George Washington's papers of 1796. This is last year in office. He's transferring. This was one of the quotes, small quotes they chose from some of his papers. Why was George Washington talking like that? George Washington understood that C.D. Muhammad accepted the Treaty of Peace and Friendship when they revised the name on the treaty to say, "United States of America" in 1789. Keeping in mind, prior to 1789, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship that was signed in 1786, 1787, was under who? Articles of Confederation. George Washington now puts together a new government. They dissolve the Articles of Confederation. They send over to C.D. Muhammad in 1789. "Hey man, we got a new constitution. Here's the new name of the parties. Can you now revise the treaty and apply the word 'United States of America' as the party?" C.D. Muhammad accepted. Okay? So therefore, what is George Washington saying here? He said that we're Americans now. The colonists get call themselves Americans. Why? Because C.D. Muhammad accepted those terms and conditions. Why did George Washington call himself American? Answer, mother, could you read that for me?
In the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1787, and revised in 1789, the Sultan of Morocco consented, ratified, and promulgated the colonists as being the Americans.
C.D. Muhammad allowed the colonists to call themselves the Americans. Okay. Treaty of Supreme of All Land. Treaty of Supreme of All Land. Got four treaties here. All of them say they talk about the Americans as a party and Morse as a party. So if Treaty of Supreme of All Land, then how can Morse say they're the Americans? We're going to talk about that. Let's go through a quick, brief history lesson. This is very important, especially for young Morse. Young Morse need to understand why they are not Americans and why they are Americans. Did you catch what I just said? In fact, you're American, but in truth, you're not. Let's learn fact versus truth. Let's learn about the history. Okay, mother?
Brief, brief history lesson. The Morse signed the Treaty of Granada, Spain, on November 25, 1491. The Morse honored the treaty and relinquished Granada on January 1, 1492. On August 3, 1492, Christopher Columbus set sail and finally landed in the Western Empire of Morocco in October of 1492. The abstract of the word "America" was created after Columbus' travels in 1492. The Morse were already in the Western Empire of Morocco prior to Christopher Cologne, Columbus' travels in 1492.
Okay, so you must understand. The colonists were not even in the continent of Northwest America until after 1492. That must be already understood. Most Morse already know that. That's basic information, right? Okay, mother?
Furthermore, the word "America" was coined, trademarked, by Martin Walzsee Mueller after Americas Vespuccius travels throughout Morocco's Western Empire in 1499. Americas Vespuccius, Latinized version of the name, is spelled Amerigo Vespucci. Americas Vespuccius published letters in Europe were the basis of Walzsee Mueller's year 1507 drawn map.
Stop. This is very important for Morse to understand. Let's pause right here. The word "America" was coined. Coin by who? Coin means trademark. It was trademarked by Martin Walzsee Mueller. Who's Martin Walzsee Mueller? He was a German, in Germany at the time. But why did he coin the word "America"? Americas Vespuccius travels throughout Morocco's Western Empire in 1499. So as he was writing letters, Amerigo Vespucci was writing letters. Eventually, over the years, the Europeans started to pick up these letters. And eventually, what happened is, the mapmaker, the mapmaker, okay? Walzsee Mueller, in the year 1507, drew the map and called the continent "America." Why they call it "America"? Let's continue learning.
Americas Vespuccius published letters in Europe were the basis of Walzsee Mueller's year 1507 drawn map, which is the first usage of the word "America." Furthermore, in the 1500s, European usage of "American" denoted the native inhabitants of the New World. The earliest recorded use of this term in English is in Thomas Hackett's 1568 translation of Andre Thibet's book, France Antarctic. Thibet himself had referred to the natives as Amerekes. In the following century, the term was extended to European settlers and their descendants in the Americas. The earliest recorded use of English-American dates to 1648 in Thomas Gage's The English American, His Travail by Sea and Land, or A New Survey of the West Indies.
Okay. So, young Morse, when did America get its name? In 1507. Why? Because Amerigo Vespucci was traveling in the land of Morocco, the western side of the empire. Okay? So the first use of the word "America." Furthermore, in the 1500s, European usage of "American" denoted the native inhabitants of the New World. So what happened? Once they named the land "America", now they refer to the inhabitants as "Americans" because that became the general word they were using, just like they call all melanated people black all around the world. They go to Africa, they call them black. You go to China, you got dark-skinned Chinese, they call them black Chinese. Everywhere you go, they call people black. It's a generic term to describe a group of people. So what did the Europeans do and the English do? They pick up that word "America", and they just apply that to everyone that was in the continent of America. It became a generic term, alright? So let's read again. "Furthermore, in the 1500s, European usage of 'American' denoted the native inhabitants of the New World." In other words, they branded you as American, but that's not what makes you who you are. The earliest recorded use of this term in English in Thomas Hackett's 1568 translation of Andre Thibet's book, France Antarctic. So they started really using the word to 1568, when it really started to have a lot of books to talk about this new world called America. "In the following century, the term was extended to Europeans." What following century? So we went from the 1500s, right? Now we're in the 1600s. "In the following century, 1600s, the term was extended to European settlers and their descendants and the Americas." Because now it's called "Americas" because the German mapmaker said it was called "Americas". They just called it "Americas," a generic word, right? But now it's being what? It's being applied, applied to descendants of who? Europeans. It's an applied word. For who were the? Europeans. Europeans had all kinds of nationalities. So it became a generic word for the Europeans. You're going to learn in a little while why that is, but I'll give you a brief. You gotta understand, George Washington did not want to be referred to as English. He wanted to be an ex-patriot of Great Britain. He didn't want to be an Englishman. He did not want to be referred to as European. He wanted his own indigenous, verse 13, colonies, and the word "American" was the word. That made a distinction between European and English. He said, "American, that's what we are." Why? Because he didn't want to be taxed by anyone. Alright? Let's continue. "The earliest recorded use of English-American dates to 1648 in Thomas Gage's The English American, His Travail by the Sea and Land, or A New Survey of the West Indies." Now look at this. Your Dutch masters, your Portuguese, your Spaniards were referred to this land at one time as the West Indies because they had already colonized parts of the Kibala, i.e. Africa. So now they're referring to this land over here, the Western Empire of Morocco, as India. They've had all kinds of names to this land. You even learn that the Dutch even came over and named the north side of Northwest America as New Amsterdam. Then later on, it was converted to what's called New York. You're going to learn about that. Let's continue. We're going through a history lesson real quick. Okay? Now let's go through some timelines. Because what I just showed you is that a German came up with the word "American", and he named it after an explorer. See, mainly Morse gotta start asking himself, "Let's just pause. Why you call yourself "American" when that's a made-up name from a mapmaker that was German who named it after an Italian explorer? Why would you do that?" Let's continue.
Timeline of Morocco being renamed as America. Timeless. Western Empire of Morocco has been in existence since ancient times to present day.
Okay, let's pause right there. Why do I say timeless? Morocco is timeless. You can't count back the number of years how long we've been here. You can't. It's just simply timeless. So when you put a timeline on it, you can't. It's just timeless. Continue, mother.
January 1, 1492. Morse relinquished Granada to the Spaniards and Rome.
Mm-hmm. So you know the Roman Holy Empire was helping Spain. Let's continue.
1492, Cristobal Cologne, aka Christopher Columbus, set sail to see the empire of Western Morocco. Note, the word "colony" or "colonizer" or "colonialism" stems from Cristobal Cologne's successful genocide of Moorish people and lands. The British were not the first colonizers.
That's important to understand, Morse. When they talk about colonization, right? People being colonized, that comes from Christopher Cologne. Cologne colony, that's where the word comes from. The Spaniards were the first to come over to Western Empire of Morocco to start colonizing. They were the first. Who was the second? France came after that. Who came after that? Dutch, et cetera. The British were the last to come over to Western Empire of Morocco to colonize. They were the last. That must be understood. They were not, the British were not the first colonizers. Let's continue.
1493, the Spaniard Christopher-
No, 1492, right.
1492, Western Empire of Morocco is referred to as the New World and the land of the Moors by Christopher Cologne Columbus. 1493, the Spaniard Christopher Columbus and other Spanish vandals renamed the islands and the central and south areas of Western Morocco after Spanish names, example Hispaniola, et cetera. And the Spanish language quickly overran the southern half of Western Morocco by use of force. Note, the Spaniards did not establish a Spanish colony in the Northwest Empire of Morocco until 1526.
Okay, that's important to understand. So Christopher Columbus came over, other Spaniards came over. They started colonizing the islands and South Morocco and Central Morocco, okay, before they ever started getting to North Morocco, okay? That must be understood. They didn't start colonizing Northwest America until 1526. They had started coming over here in 1492. So it took them over 100 years before they even settled one colony in Northwest America. That must be understood, Morse. Okay, mother?
1499, Western Empire of Morocco is referred to as the New World and the land of the Moors by Americas Amerigo Vespucci. 1507, mapmaker Martin Walzsee Mueller coined, trademarked, the word "America" to recognize Vespucci's explorations in Morocco.
Pause right there. I'm going to say it again. Young Morse, you must understand, the word "America" is a coined, trademarked word. That's the reason why when the colonists finally came over here and started settling up, settling their colonies, their first colony was what? Jamestown, right? Jamestown. But even from the 1600s all the way up to nearly 1800, remember now, they didn't call themselves Americans in writing of a treaty or constitution until 1789. Took them nearly 300 years to use the word "American." Why? It was trademarked. They couldn't use it. They eventually started using it in 1789. It got trademarked in 1507. So, young Morse, why would you call yourself "American" when you know it's a trademark word of an Italian who's named after Italian, just like Africa is named after Cypriot Africanus, a German, excuse me, a Russian, a Roman, Roman general. Africa is named after a Roman general, Cypriot Africanus, from the Punic Wars of 200 B.C. Let's continue.
1507 to 1532. Europeans adopted the new official name and maps of the New World as being America until present day, 21st century. 1789, the Sultan in the Empire of Morocco signs the revised Treaty of Peace and Friendship with George Washington, with George Washington's United States of America after they dissolve the Articles of Confederation as a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787.
Okay, so this is what I was saying earlier. The original parties, the original parties, the contracting parties. In seventeen eighty-six, seventeen eighty-seven was the Articles of Confederation, which is a colonist who were ex-patriots of Great Britain and ex-patriots of other European states. Now they're going under the name of America. Why? Seventeen eighty-nine, Wash- Washington now changed the constitution and their government to the United States of America, and Sidi Muhammad allows him now retroactively to go back and change the name to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-seven. Even though George Washington then petitioned a new name to seventeen eighty-nine. That must be understood. That's when they became Americans lawfully. Because Sidi Muhammad allowed them to be the Americans because the word American applies to just a trademark word. Let's continue.
Seventeen eighty-seven. The American is any person that possesses an allegiance or acquiescence to the jurisdiction of the United States of America Republic or the United States of America or the United States. In pursuance to the ratified and promulgated Treaties of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six. Enter alia.
Okay. This is important to understand. Seventeen eighty-seven. The American is any person that possesses allegiance or acquiescence to the jurisdiction of the United States of America Republic. Cause that's what the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is all about. Or the United States of America Corporation, or the United States Corporation, in pursuance to the ratified and pro- um, prom- promulgated Treaties of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six, enter alia. Why is that important to understand? The only people that are lawfully the Americans is those people that are descendants of America that Sidi Muhammad allowed the colonists to consider themselves Americans. Or those people who have been naturalized illegally. Or those people who come over to the Americas and pledge their allegiance to America and have a dual citizenship. Or either they renounce their old citizenship and become citizens of the United States. That must be understood, Morse. The only Americans are the people that are expatriates of England and expatriates of Europe. Or those people who have acquiesced or capitulated to being Americans because you have failed to come back to your own Moroccan state government. Let's continue.
The word America or American only applies to the descendants of expatriates of England and Europe per Moroccan treaty law and to any persons that become naturalized citizens of the U.S. Stateless Moors are in fact Moorish Americans because they are sovereign citizens that have failed to comply with the supreme law of the land. Example, the Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, as follows. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall, after having remained for a length of time, equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between the entire submission of the empire.
Okay, let's start right there. This is saying a lot, Morse. This is the words from a treaty. Treaty is the supreme law of the land. The Sultan gave specific instructions to Moors. To Moors, okay? Now. Stateless Moors are in fact Moorish Americans, in fact, but it's the truth. Because they are sovereign citizens that have failed to comply with the supreme law of the land. And what is the supreme law of the land? For example, the Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, as follows. What do the instructions of the treaty say? Let's listen. It's very specific. Morse gotta pay attention. Listen. Any subject of Morocco. Well, who's the subjects? Proteges of America. But the Sultan is already telling you that you're a Moor in Morocco. Never refer to you as American. Refer to you as a Moroccan of Morocco, a Moor. Listen. Any subject of Morocco. That's how it starts off. Who has been naturalized in a foreign country. So we know what the foreign country is, United States. And who shall return to Morocco. Wait. So any subject of Morocco shall return to Morocco. It's already talking about Morocco two times already. Never talked about America. Shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between. Choose between. Choose between the entire submission of the empire, et cetera. What's happening? Listen to me, Morse. Listen to me very carefully, especially young boys. Listen. You have an obligation to choose between. That means two things, right? Between, between what? Entire submission of the empire. Listen. Look at this ID. The Moors have IDs. They got several different IDs. This is just an example. This particular Moor saying he's an Aboriginal American national. Well, we already learned that America is trademarked. It's named after Amerigo Vespucci, a German. Amerigo Vespucci was Italian. And Sidi Muhammad allowed them, the colonists, who were refugees in Morocco, to be the Americans. Cause Sidi Muhammad knew the word American had nothing to do with Moors. But Morse said what? I'm Aboriginal American. America's not Aboriginal. It's just a term. Not a nationality. But what's important here? When Morse say what? Right here says nationality, Moor American. Listen. Hopefully Morse can see that at home. Right here, nationality, Moor American. What's happening? See, that's that choose between. Watch. Listen. There's Morocco. There's America. Two different jurisdictions. Okay. When you turn around and say you're a Moorish American. You're a Moorish American. Go back to ID card. Moorish American. Listen, what does the treaty say? Here's the original treaty. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country who shall return to Morocco shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between. Choose between. Hold up. How are you choosing between when you're claiming both? That's just like LeBron James saying, they ask him, "Okay, LeBron, what team you play for?" He says, "Uh, Cavaliers Lakers." No, no, LeBron is serious. What team do you play for? Cavaliers Lakers. Wait, that don't make no sense. You play for Cavaliers or the Lakers? LeBron said, "Who you play for?" Cavaliers Lakers. Okay, so let me ask you again, LeBron. When the Cavaliers play the Lakers, which team you'll be on? Both. That's what you're saying to the colonists when you write these identification cards and say you're a Moorish American. Either you are a Moor of Morocco or you are American of the United States. You gotta pick one. Why? Because the Sultan said that. The Sultan said that. Let's go back to it. Where is that? Right here. Moors have to do what? Choose between. Choose between. That's in the Rights Indigenous People. Article five, it tells you again, you gotta choose. Okay, right here, the treaty, which is more supreme than the Articles of the Indigenous People. The treaty is more supreme than the Rights Indigenous People Declaration. So let's look at the treaty. Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. Moors have to do what? Choose between what? The entire submission. What does entire mean? Hundred percent. Submission to what? The empire. What empire? Well, they tell you two times. Morocco, Morocco. Where does it say American in there? It's trying to tell you, get out of America. Foreign country, America, get out of it. But what are Moors doing? Listen. Saying they're Moorish Americans, Moorish Americans. Okay, wait a minute. So you're saying you're a Moorish American. You're a Cavalier Laker. Don't make no sense. Now I get it. When Moors started first learning about their status, Moors actually thought because some colonists told them they came off a boat from Africa. So I get it. Moors eventually had to start learning they were already home. I get that concept. But here's the problem. When a Moor puts on a fad and a turban, and you tell people you are Moor. You're telling the whole world you're competent and you understand yourself. You know who you are and you know, you know exactly where you're from. Then you turn around and say, "Yeah, I'm a Cavalier Laker. I'm a Moorish American." What does that mean? When you say you're a Moorish American, just looks like saying you're a Chinese American. You know what Chinese American is? That's a dual citizenship. You know what a Mexican American is? That's a dual citizenship. When you say you're a Moorish American, that's a dual citizenship. But the problem is, you're not a citizen or a national of a Moorish state. So the reality is, you're just a sovereign citizen of the United States. What does sovereign citizen mean? Why are the police rolling up on us? Why are people telling Moors they're sovereign citizens? Why is that? Cause Moors don't understand what sovereign citizen means. The colonists are telling you the truth. They're telling you you're sovereign. Yeah, you're sovereign. But you're sovereign to the United States of America because you don't have your own sovereign state. Yeah, you're sovereign because you're a Moor by birthright. You have a birthright to your land. But since you have failed to comply to the treaty, now you are what you call a stateless person. And what happens to stateless people? Let's learn about that. Mother, can you read this for me, please?
Stateless person, international law. A natural person who is not considered a national by any country. The Stateless Persons Convention nineteen fifty-four provides these people with certain protections as well as obliging them to abide by the laws of the country where they reside. It is, of course, quite possible that a person may be without any nationality in which case he is referred to as a stateless person.
Okay, thank you very much. So what's happening? Four stateless people. Okay. They tell you in the Black's Law Dictionary. Morse is already reading the Black's Law Dictionary. Let's listen. Black stateless person, international law. Morse gotta do what? Study international law. Let's continue. Let's continue. International law. A natural person who is not considered a national by any country. The Stateless Persons Convention nineteen fifty-four provides these people with certain protections as well as obliging them to abide by the laws of the country where they reside. Morse say, "Well, I don't, I don't reside in the United States." Okay, then where do you domicile? Tell me the name of your state provincial government. There's a constitution, flag, seal, open allegiance to said state. That you have ratified that constitution? You have now taken that constitution, repolled with the United Nations Charter. Do you have that state? If the answer is no, then guess what? You're stateless. And if you're stateless, you must abide by what? You must abide by the laws of the country where they reside. Morse reside in the United States of America. Why? Because you're there temporarily. That's what residency means. You're a temporary state. And you, until you do what? Listen. Until you do what? Choose between the entire submission of the empire. When you do that, then you come back and domicile in Morocco, in Morocco, in Morocco, not America. Let's continue. Okay. If I can have the Mr. Cornet Fair to read this for me, please?
Stateless Moors are in fact Americans only because they have not chosen the entire submission to the laws of the empire. Entire submission means the capitulatory Moorish Americans finally recognize that they are not Americans. Then afterwards, they must reject the applied branding of being the Aboriginal American. And then restore one hundred percent of their Moorish state governments in Morocco.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet Fair. Listen. Stateless Moors are in fact Americans only because they have not chosen the entire submission to the laws of the empire. How do I know they haven't chosen the entire submission? Okay, let's go back to the reference point. This is what Moors continuously keep giving the colonists. Morse keep saying what? Were Moorish Americans. What else do Moors keep doing? This is what Moors are doing. Moors are saying, "I'm Aboriginal American." Where does it say that in the treaty? You have an obligation to come back and do what? Choose between the entire submission of the laws of the empire. What empire? Morocco, not America? Why am I explaining this? Because as Moors start understanding, when you start coming back in the statehood, you can't bring those old paradigm ways of doing things. I get it. First, we had to understand, we was of the continent of America. Okay, once you put on a fad, you got a nationality card, you tell everybody you know who you are. That must, you, you have an obligation to get back to these treaties. This is why I tell the Moors, put this constitution down and pick up your treaties. When you pick up the treaties, the treaties tell you, you must come back to what? A Moroccan government. Let's continue. Right here. Entire submission means, entire submission means the capitulatory Moorish Americans finally recognize that they are not Americans. Then afterwards, they must reject the applied branding of being the Aboriginal Americans. Where does the word applied come from? Noah Webster's dictionary. It was applied to us, but that does not make us who we are. And Moors are holding on to the fact of one definition from Noah Webster. And where did Noah Webster get that, that, that definition from? Eighteen twenty-eight, right? Okay, why did he define it like that? You know why? Because Sidi Muhammad and George Washington defined it in seventeen eighty-nine. Now here comes George, here comes Noah Webster in eighteen twenty-eight. Who's the American? The colonists. Why? Because the treaty, Supreme Law of the Land. Let's read it again. Entire submission means the capitulatory Moorish Americans finally recognize that they are not Americans. Then afterwards, they must reject the applied branding of being the Aboriginal Americans. Cause there's no such thing as an Aboriginal American. It's a coined term by Germans and Italians. And then restore one hundred percent of their Moorish state governments in Morocco. Why do I say that? Because I'm quoting the treaty. Treaty of Madrid, gotta come back. Hundred percent. That's what entire means, one hundred percent. Let's continue. Okay, mother.
Entire means one hundred percent restoration of independent states and the restoration of the central body politic for the Western Empire of Morocco. For example, but not limited to, a Moorish constitution that outlines the permanent latitude and longitude of the state. Three branches of government, state flag, empire flag, state seal, allegiance to state, public inauguration, ratification and depository of your Moorish state constitution and all ratified treaties, conventions, declarations, and the Charter of the United Nations with the Secretariat of the Charter. And garner Moorish state ID cards for the nationals.
What's that called? Coming back into full powers, what's that called? Following the instructions of the Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen. Come checking the boxes, coming back into the entire submission of the empire, means you're no longer calling yourself an American. You're not American. However, you are American if you're a protege. Let's continue. Okay, Mother.
Moors, Moors nationals have never been Americans and Moors nationals will never be Americans without the consent of a Moroccan government.
Okay, where do we get that from? The treaty, that's, that's not, Ampas hyperbole. Okay, let's take a look at it, just a moment. Okay. Article fifteen, Treaty Madrid, Article fifteen, right? Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time eager to wish shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligations to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Now listen. How many times the word Morocco listed in Article fifteen? Let's count it. One, two, three, four, five. Five times, one article. Did it ever mention America? Did it ever say that Moors are Americans that's trying to get back to America? No, because C.D. Muhammad, all the colonists know where they got the word America from. It's a social construct that has become organic because C.D. Muhammad allowed it to become organic. And Moors can't be Aboriginal of America because it's a made up social construct. And we can't claim two jurisdictions. But the worst part is, when you say you're a Moor, who defines you as saying you're a Moor? Listen. Here's that identification card. Okay, this is the one we're looking at, just a moment. Okay. Be patient with me, Moors, I'm gonna get us through this. Okay. Here you go. Tell me the name of the state provincial government, the independent state that issued you this nationality card from your state. According to Article fifteen, you must submit to the entire laws of the empire. Where are you getting this nationality card? Because that's all this is, is a nationality card. This has nothing to do with government credentials. It's just a nationality card. Anybody's entitled to have a nationality card. But when Moors start quoting over here stuff about government and the states, that's when you start becoming patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. Who issued you this card? Moors, we gotta start telling the truth, Moors. Moors, we gotta be honest with ourselves. Moors got pain. Moors want to fix this. How do we fix it? We just simply need to follow the instructions. And this is not the instructions. This is what you call taking shortcuts. And I get it, we're trying to put brakes on this thing. But this is not how you stop it. This is how you just try to slow things down. But this is contrary to Moroccan law. What do I mean? The Sultan said, come back to the entire submission, not to take shortcuts. Let's continue.
Moors nationals have never been Americans and Moors nationals will never be Americans without the consent of a Moroccan government.
Continue.
The common law truth, Moors are Moroccans and Moroccans are in the empire of Morocco. And Morocco is in Amexum. And Amexum is the sacred trust of the Moors. And the Moors are the trustees of the treaties of planet Earth. And anything contrary is notwithstanding.
All right, so now we're talking truth. That's fact versus truth. What's the truth? What's the common law truth? What's nature's law? Matiaku law? Common law, jurisprudence? What is it? Here's the truth, the common law truth. Moors are Moroccans and Moroccans are in the empire of Morocco. And Morocco is in Amexum. And Amexum is the sacred trust of the Moors. And the Moors are the trustees of the treaties of planet Earth. And anything contrary is not withstanding. Because treaties is the Supreme Law of the Land. And Moors are not the Americans. The Americans are the other party. The Moors are the first party. We're the authors of the treaties. And the Americans that C.D. Muhammad allowed them to call themselves American because he knew it was a social construct. He didn't care nothing about the word American because C.D. Muhammad knew they couldn't call themselves Moors. C.D. Muhammad knew they couldn't say they was in Morocco because C.D. Muhammad wanted to make a distinction between those jurisdictions. Moors are not Americans unless you're a protege of America, which makes you the property of America. Let's continue.
However, the ICJ judgment of nineteen fifty-two, France versus United States of America, says that Moors Americans, examples, subjects and proteges are legally Americans by acquiescence and capitulation.
Okay, thank you. Let's talk truth. What did the World Court say about Moors status? What status do the Moors have? They are proteges and subjects because Moors have capitulated, acquiesced, or tacit acquiesced to being citizens of the United States because Moors have failed to do what? Come back to the entire submission of the laws of the empire. So therefore, the ICJ said about the Moors, where the Moors failed to follow the Supreme Law of the Land. Let's read it. However, the ICJ judgment of nineteen fifty-two, France versus United States of America, says that Moors Americans, i.e. subjects and proteges, are legally, legally Americans by acquiescence and capitulation. Why? Because the ICJ knows you're not Americans. France knows you're not Americans. Everybody knows you're not Americans. But you are American by fact, if in fact you have failed to comply to the treaties. That's why I tell Moors, put this down. You keep saying enforce the constitution. Okay, enforce the constitution on yourself. What does it say? It says, put this down and go back to the treaties. Question. So are Moors Americans? Yes, in fact. And no, in truth. Nevertheless, the Moors cannot serve two masters. You cannot say you play for the Cavaliers Lakers. You cannot say you're Moors American because, oh, two separate jurisdictions. And the treaty is specific. Why do you think that King of Morocco in nineteen fifty-eight, through a conspiracy with the United States, through the Moors underneath the bus and tried to omit Article fifteen of the Treaty Madrid? And said that Article fifteen now is what? Obsolete, nationality obsolete. What was happening? See, the United States knew that all Moors had to do is force the treaty. But wait, that happened in nineteen fifty-eight. Isn't what the King of Morocco and the United States did contrary to the Charter of the United Nations? Because the Charter of the United Nations that came out nineteen forty-five was all about what? The preamble, enforcing treaties. What else happened in nineteen forty-eight? The Declaration of Human Rights, said what? You're entitled to a nationality, Article fifteen, right? Human rights. So Moors have every human right according to the Charter, according to Declaration of Human Rights and according to the treaty. So everything that the King of the Kingdom of Morocco and the United States administrated, everything they did was contrary to Moroccan treaties and contrary to international law. That must be understood. So Moors cannot serve two masters. Let's continue. Okay, Mother.
For the record, no other nationals of South, Central or North Amexum refer to themselves as being Americans other than stateless Moors and the citizens of the United States. For example, Mexicans do not refer to themselves as being Americans. Panamanians do not refer to themselves as being Americans. Colombians do not refer to themselves as being Americans. Brazilians do not refer to themselves as being Americans. Canadians do not refer to themselves as being Americans.
Hold up. Listen. We're talking about the continent. The expansive continent of Amexum, North, Central and South. Why is it only in what they call the latitude longitude of what commonly known as the United States, only the people in that subsection of what they call North America? Let's look at it. These are the only people calling themselves Americans, Americans in the entire continent. From the tip of Greenland all the way down to Chile and the surrounding islands. Who are the only people arguing over the word American? I'll tell you who. Moors. And Americans. People in Canada call themselves Americans. Soon as you go south of the Rio Grande into Mexico and on down to Chile, everybody calls themselves by their free national name. So why are Moors the only ones arguing about they're Americans? You know why? Because they found that in a definition from Noah Webster's dictionary. When they went to the treaties, the treaties never referred to you as being American. They all refer to you being a Moor or a Moors government or a subject or a protege. It never refers to you being American unless they're classifying you as being the property of America. We're not Moors Americans. But you are a Moors American if you're stateless. Mother.
Why? Because the United States of America is a political extraterritorial jurisdiction of fifty interdependent union states, including the U.S. Island Territories in Morocco. The nationals from the other recognized thirty-four states of the continent do not refer to themselves as being Americans because they are not Americans. They are Aboriginal Moors and hybrid Moors that have consented to the political jurisdiction and name of their permanent state provincial government within the Moroccan empire.
Did you catch what just, I just said? These are my notes, by the way. These are my notes of Ampas. You must understand, I have an obligation as a constable court judge, as a chief cause of Ampas, to do what? Enforce treaties, to enforce constitutions. My job as the judge is to do what? Interpret the law and enforce the law. And I'm trying to let the Moors know as constable court, because Moors talking about they want constable court. Okay, Moors, how are you going to enforce constable court if you calling yourself American? The only Moors can enforce constable court is Moors of a state and your state must come back to a Moroccan government, not an American government. Listen. Why do people in all the other states in the continent never refer themselves being American? Why? I'll tell you why. Because the United States of America is a political extraterritorial jurisdiction of fifty interdependent union states. What does interdependent mean? The United States of America has a bundle package of fifty states within it. But on an international level, they consider themselves one state called the United States of America. They're one state on an international level. But domestically, they are fifty states plus the surrounding territories they're claiming as property. Take for instance Puerto Rico. Puerto Rico is not a state, according to international law. Puerto Rico is not recognized as a state even by the fifty other states. It's just a political territory of the United States. The nationals from the other recognized thirty-four states of the continent do not refer to themselves as being Americans because they are not Americans. Who's the Americans? The Americans are the colonists of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. The Americans are anyone who's descendants of said treaty. They're the colonists, ex-patriots of England and Europe. The Americans is anyone who now has been naturalized in a foreign country. The Americans are any other foreigners who come over intentionally to sign on and get a dual nationality, dual citizenship. Those are Americans, according to law. But what did the treaty say? The treaty says, you're a Moor in Morocco and you must come back and submit, choose between the entire submission of the laws of the empire. Let's continue. They are Aboriginal Moors and hybrid Moors that have consented, consented, consented to the political jurisdiction and name of their permanent state, provincial government within the Moroccan empire. So where are the Moors states? Moors needs to understand, when Moors come back and submit to their Moors state, then you're coming back to Morocco. It just can't be your mirror expression out of your mouth. It can't be just because you put together a nationality card, because that's all this is. This is not a state provincial identification from your state, which makes you now a national of your state. And when you give this to the colonists, whether you give it to the police or you send it as a copy to the administrators of the colonial states, soon as they read it and see the top and say, you said you're Aboriginal of America? You just admitted that you are in the jurisdiction of America. You have every right to your nationality calling yourself a Moor, but you must study international law and understand, as soon as you throw in the word America into it, you just claimed the jurisdiction. Because the treaties are specific. You either come back to the entire submission of Morocco or either you're a citizen of the United States. Moors gotta choose. Right here. What was the ICJ talking about? The ICJ said, the ICJ judgment of nineteen fifty-two, France versus United States of America, says that Moors Americans, i.e. subjects and proteges, are legally Americans by acquiescence and capitulation. What's this word capitulations? The ICJ talks about this a lot. Other colonial states talk about this capitulation a lot. When Moors start studying international law, you'll start seeing this word capitulation a lot. Okay, let's, let's really look at this, hold it. What's happening with this word? Capitulation. What does this mean? We're gonna look it up here in a minute. It's a compound word, do you see it? Capitulations. You see capital? See right there? Capital. Colonists always say they have a capitalist society. What does that mean? Capital, because they captured, captured, captured. Capitulation, captured the enemy. And now they're running a capital society. Capitulations. Okay, let's look at it. Capitulations. Mother.
Capitulation. In military law, the surrender of a fort, fortified town or army in the field to a besieging or opposing army. The treaty or agreement between the commanding officers which embodies the terms and conditions on which the surrender is made.
Okay, let's stop right there. What does capitulation mean? It means in military law, so the United States came over, used a force. The Spanish came over, used a force. The French came over, used a force. The Dutch came over, used a force and colonized Moors, right? It is the surrender. The surrender of a fort, fortified town or army in the field of besieging or opposing army. So that's saying the Moors surrendered. Surrendered what? Our governments, our territories, our rights. We surrendered our continent authority and became the property of Americans. What happened? The treaty or the agreement between the commanding officers which embodies the terms and conditions on which surrender is made. So what's happening? What are they saying here? That the Moors surrendered what? Where'd the Moors surrender? The Moors surrendered their treaty. How did we surrender the treaty? Because we stopped having functional governments. We capitulated by being surrendered and not operating our own Moors governments in Morocco. The Moors failed to come back into statehood. The moors failed to come back into statehood. Which means now the treaties, basically, we have waived our right to the treaty because we're not claiming to be the party of the treaty. And the only way to be a party, you must come back to what? You got to choose the entire submission. It is a somewhat submission. It is a half submission. It's an entire. That's one hundred percent. And until we do that, we have waived our rights to this treaty under surrender status. We surrendered our own rights. Because we're taking shortcuts. And we reform to ourselves as the Americans. That's an oxymoron. You can't be the moor and the American. You saying you're both sides of the contract. Which part of the contract are you? This treaty of peace and friendship seventeen eighty-seven. Two parties. It's a bilateral treaty. Two parties, moors and Americans. Which one are you, moors? Let's continue.
In international law, capitulations is the name used for treaty engagements between the Turkish government and the principal states of Europe by which subjects of the latter residence in the territory of the former were exempt from the laws.
Okay. Just a moment.
Of the places where they dwelt.
Okay.
Invasion of Crimea, one sixteen. The usages of the Franks begin in what are known in international law as the capitulations granting rights to extraterritoriality to Christians residing or traveling in Mohammedan countries. By these capitulations, a usage was established where that Franks a generic name for all participants in such privileges being in Turkey, whether domiciled or temporarily, should be under the jurisdiction, civil and criminal, of their respective ministers and consuls.
Okay, thank you, mother. Let's go back. Let's go back. Let's learn. This is AMPAC study session. This is about studying more. What are we studying? We're studying international law so moors can get the answers to the test. Okay, let's go. Right here. International law. Right here. So watch this, moors. In international law, so we keep seeing this word international law. We looked up stateless person says international law. We're looking up capitulations, international law. Moors got to study international law. Let's listen. In international law, capitulations is the name used for the treaty engagements between the Turkish government. Who's the Turkish government? That's moorish governments. See, you have to understand when the colonists write the Black Law Dictionary, they use these two words called blacks and Turkish. Blacks on the front of the cover of Black Law Dictionary, talking about moors, they use this word Turkish. They're talking about the Moroccan Empire. But they don't use the word moor because they, they're told not to use the word moor, even though they define the word moor in the Black Law Dictionary. Listen. Capitulations is the name used for the treaty engagements between. Between, remember? Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen talked about what? Choosing between. Now here, right here, you got the word between. Between who? The Turkish government and the principal states of Europe. Now that between, okay, moors. You say you're a moorish American. Even the colonists are saying between. In their own definition of capitulations, they're talking about two separate parties. But moors are claiming to be both. Listen. Capitulations is the name used for treaty engagements between the Turkish government, which is the Moroccan Empire, and the principal. See, they're saying the principal. You see what they did right here? They're saying what? That they have now taken over. They're superior. That's what principal means. Principal states of who? Of Europe. But what's Europe? That's the Franks. We're going to learn about the Franks here in just a minute. By which the subjects of the latter residents in territories of the former. Did you catch what just happened? Let's read it again. Let's take our time. Capitulations is a name used for the treaty engagement between the moorish governments and the principal states of the United States by which the subjects of the latter residents in the territory of the former. So who's the latter? States of Europe. Who's the former? The Turkish governments. So they're telling you the truth right here. Capitulation means that the European states, United States, has taken over moorish governments. Listen. So who this former saying now we're exempt? Who's exempt? European states. United States of America. Listen, it's saying they're exempt from what? From the laws. What laws? Okay. Let's move up. Listen, young moors. Listen. From the laws of the places where they dwell. So where is the United States dwelling right now? In Morocco. They call it now the United States. Used to be called United States of America before United States, United States of America colonized Morocco. You look at any map now, it's called what? United States. It ain't called Morocco no more. Why is it called Morocco? Because the German mapmaker, the German mapmaker renamed it America. Moors got to know their history. Listen, this is very interesting right here, moors. Listen. The usages of the Franks began in what are known in the international law as the capitulations. So who's using capitulations? The Franks. Granting rights of extraterritoriality to Christians residing or traveling in Mohammedan countries. Where's Mohammedan countries? Before we look up the Franks. Where's Mohammedan countries? Okay, where's Mohammedan countries? Wait a minute. President Barack H. Obama went to Cairo, Egypt in two thousand nine before he signed the Rights of Indigenous People in twenty ten. Why did he do that? He was trying to tell you about the Mohammedan nations. Before Barack H. Obama left Cairo, Egypt, and he had this speech and quoted Article eleven. He told you about the Mohammed law. Why was he doing that? He was telling the United States administrators that we have an obligation to the treaties. That's why he went and signed the Rights of Indigenous People. Because the treaty of supreme law of the land, President Barack H. Obama was following the instructions of the treaties by quoting Mohammed nation because he's talking about what? The laws. The laws of the nation. Where's the word laws? Let me find it. There it is. Against the laws. I put it in red. I still missed it. Okay. What? No character emerging against the laws. What laws? The laws of Mohammed nation. The Mohammed nation is the law. What law? The law of the treaties. Let's go back. Capitulations. So right here. They put right here. Capitulations, right? Right here. Let's start over. The usages of the Franks. We're going to look up Franks. Begin in what are known in international law as the capitulations granting rights of extraterritoriality to Christians residing or traveling in Mohammedan countries. Where's Morocco, Mohammed country? Morocco. This is why President Barack H. Obama was talking about this in Cairo, Egypt in two thousand nine. Because he knows the United States is where? In Mohammedan country. What's the Mohammed country? Morocco. Now, let's go look up, see who the Franks are so we can understand this paragraph. Okay. I know it's difficult for moors at home to see this a little fuzzy. You got to do some research. Moors, go back and research the Franks. What's the territory of the Franks? Okay. Give you a quick brief. The Franks are nothing but a combination of European countries coming together and colonizing Africa and as well as commonly known as America. Okay? I.e. Mohammed nations. They're colonizing Mohammed nations. So who's the Franks? So you can see, this is the map. This is the tip of Morocco. This is Morocco right here, moors. Okay? Right here. This is modern day Spain coming on off the Franks. That's France, okay? You know that's Italy. Everybody knows Italy, Rome, et cetera, okay? This is what you call the Franks. This is the combination. Make it a little smaller. This is a combination of all your colonial states coming together now to come over and colonize northwest of Maxim, central of Maxim, and south of Maxim, i.e. the Moroccan Empire. That's the Franks. Collectively, the Franks, okay? Who else is Franks? Who else is the Franks? England. I know the, know the moors at home can't see that. Just go back and look at a map. English. England. They're part of the Franks, okay? So the Franks are the Frankensteins. The Frankensteins. Frankenstein was put together. The Franks came together. The colonial states came together, same way they did with the Berlin Conference of eighteen eighty-four. They came together. Okay? So the Berlin Conference of eighteen eighty-four number the second rendition of the Franks. Okay? So who are the Franks? Colonists. Okay, let's go back. Let's start from the beginning. The usages of the Franks. Colonists. Begin in what are known in the international law as the capitulation granting rights of extraterritorial orality to Christians. The Christian powers. Residing or traveling in Mohammedan countries. You see right here, they say they residing. They didn't say they domiciled. They say they reside. That's a temporary state. Why is it temporary? Because the treaties expire early fifty years. Or traveling in Mohammedan countries. By these. They're talking instructions. By these instructions. Capitulations and usage was established with that Franks a generic name for all participants in such privileges. So the United States has what in Morocco?
Privileges.
Privileges to stay. Because they're doing what? Residing. Privileges being in Turkey. Where's Turkey? Moroccan Empire. Turkey, whether domiciled or temporarily, should be under jurisdiction, civil and criminal, of their respective ministers and consuls. You see what happened? Moors got colonized. The Franks, i.e. the colonists, took over our courts. So now when you go back and you read the French Protector of nineteen thirteen, now do you understand why France came over and needed to start talking about moors and consul court? Because under capitulation, the colonists took away our consul courts of moorish governments. And made the moors think they were Americans. Let's continue. I know that AMPAC pointed out some themes this evening. There are a lot of moors may or may not take offense to. But one thing I do know is this. Moors got to go back and study, study, study their own history. You have to study your own treaties. And your treaties never refer to you as being an American unless it refers to you as being a protege or subject of the Americans. They never refer to you as being the American. As we start to wrap up. These are the four treaties. The four treaties. The four treaties. Bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, right? That, that should have been seventeen eighty-seven. I do apologize. It should have been seventeen eighty-seven. Was about what? A moor and a moor state government. So the moors at that time, they still have some governments. Then the bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six is about what? A moor and a moor state government. It's about moors dealing with the Americans. And then what happens in eighteen eighty? Multilateral, multilateral, multilateral Treaty of Madrid in eighteen eighty, what happens? Now all of a sudden, a stateless moor in protege and subject status. Our status changed. These first two treaties, we had moorish governments. Then on the capitulations, they ran out, ran us out of government by eighteen eighty. We became stateless moors because we had no more states. And we became proteges and subjects. That's why the Sultan had to put together this treaty to define the rights of moors when they come back to their own governments. What else happened? The multilateral, multilateral, multilateral Treaty of the Act of Al-Dusers nineteen oh six, which is a Moroccan treaty, is about what? A stateless moor and protege and subject status. But none of these treaties refer to you as being the American. It only refers to you as being a protege of America until you come back to Morocco. That's what these treaties are all about. Getting you back to yourself. The moors have to come back into Islam. I self-law and master. Master what? Mastering understanding that you're not American. You never have been and never will be. Now AMPAC can point out problems. But you know AMPAC is all about solutions too. Let's talk about solutions. This is the Act of Al-Dusers nineteen oh six, chapter seven. Articles one twenty through one twenty-three. I just pointed out a lot of misconceptions. But the young moors, especially young moors, young moors got to start reading the treaties. And the treaties tell you specific instructions, young moors. Let's read the instructions that the moors have to comply to in order for you to start getting back into what's called the entire submission of the laws of the empire. Okay, mother. Let's go hand read.
Article, chapter seven, general provisions. Article one twenty. With a view to harmonizing its legislation, if the occasion arises with the engagements contracted under the present general act, each of the signatory powers engages to take the necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation as may be necessary so far as it is concerned.
Okay, so what did we just learn, young moors? We're talking instructions. We're talking the answers to the test, moors. Listen. This is the Sultan laid down. This is part of the triple principles. This is mandatory. Article one twenty. With a view to harmonizing. That means coming together. Integrity of domains. It's legislation. If the occasion arises with the engagements contracted. So it's a contract. The Act of Al-Dusers is a contract. Moors must understand what's called strict liability of contracts. When moors are working outside the contract, that makes you an outlaw. You can't take any shortcuts, moors. You can't cheat the process. You must trust the process and check the boxes. Listen. With a view to harmonizing its legislation, if the occasion arises with the engagement contracted under the present general act, each of the signatory powers engages to take the necessary steps leading to the engagement of such legislation. So moors have to take the necessary step to engage legislation. Legislation of what? Your constitution. This is AMPAC's constitution. That's the steps. Constitution. What's the next step? Okay. Instructions tell you, young moors. Okay, young moors, let's go. It says what? Each of the signatory powers engage to take the necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation as may be necessary so far as it concerns. So you have to do it, right? These are instructions. Supreme law of the land. Okay, mother. Article one twenty-one.
The present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. The ratifications shall be deposited at Madrid as soon as practicable and at the latest by December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six.
Okay, what's happening? Young moors, these are the instructions. You are a moorish American until you come back and submit to the entire laws of the empire. How do you do that? Okay. Article one twenty-one. The present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. Moors got to come back to the constitutional laws of each state. And do what? Ratify. The ratification shall be deposited, deposited, deposited at Madrid. Now, we all know Madrid now is the United Nations Charter Secretariat as soon as practicable. Those are the instructions. What's the instructions? Right here. Constitutional laws, ratification, and depository. Those are the instructions. These are the answers to the test. Since nineteen oh six. Since nineteen oh six. Okay, Mother, right here. A process.
A process verbal shall be made of such deposit and a certified copy sent to each of the signatory powers through the diplomatic channel.
Okay, so what happens? Once the Moors put on the record, you got your constitution, now you proceeded, ratified to the treaties, declarations, et cetera, conventions. What do you do next? Now you must take your constitution and deposit it with the Secretary of the United Nations along with your treaties, declarations, and conventions. All of it. Put it on the record. After that, what is the United Nations Charter Secretary, what's their responsibility? Now to notify all the signatory powers that have signed on the bilateral treaties and multilateral treaties that now you are party to that contract. Article one twenty-two.
The present general act shall enter into effect as soon as all the ratifications shall have been deposited and at the latest on December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six.
Okay, so what's happening? Listen, Moors. These are the instructions. Look what the United Nations obligation is. Listen. One twenty-two. The present general act shall enter into effect as soon as all the ratifications shall have been deposited. So soon as Moors ratify and deposit, it becomes active. You're not waiting on the United Nations to tell you, you can use it. You're not waiting on the United States to tell you, you can use it. It becomes active. This is nineteen oh six. We're in the year January twenty twenty-two. Okay, Mother.
In case the special legislative measures, which may be necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act, shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification. These stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after the legislative measures above referred to have been promulgated.
Did you hear that, Moors? What does it mean? Your treaties are not enforceable until you ratify through your state. Let's listen. Listen, Moors. These are being answers to the test since nineteen oh six. In case the special legislative measures, which may be necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco. So Moors live in Morocco. We live in Morocco. We don't reside in Morocco. We live in Morocco. So these are our instructions. Because we're not Americans, but these instructions for Moors and the signatory powers do what? In Morocco, certain stipulations of this present general act shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification. So if they hadn't done it, they had to go back and ratify it through their state. What happens? If that shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification, these stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after, after the legislative measures above referred to shall have been promulgated. What does that mean? Did you follow the instructions? Did you go back to your state? Do you have a constitution? Do you have a state? And did you come back and ratify the treaties? Did you come back and ratify the treaties? Listen to me, Moors. Did you come back? All the treaties, declarations, the charter, the convention. Did you come back and take these and ratify them through your state? And put it on the record of your internal state. It becomes the law of your state, just like that. Your constitution and these treaties now become one. Then what do you do? You take your constitution, all your treaties, declarations, and conventions. You do what now? You take it and put it on the record with the United Nations Charter. Y'all got a copy. After you have a copy, they gotta send all this to the other signatory powers that signed on to all the treaties, conventions, and declarations and the charter of the United Nations to let them know that a new modern Moorish state is on the record. These are the instructions. And if Moors have not followed the instructions of the treaties, treaty of supreme law of the land, what does that mean? That means you're American. That means you're a protege. That means you're a subject of America. That means you're a Moorish American legally. But you are not a Moorish national of a Moorish state enforcing Moorish treaties because you can't enforce treaties. You can't enforce constitutions. You can't enforce conventions. You can't enforce declarations until you follow the instructions. The Sultan told the colonists they couldn't enforce it. So my question to the Moors is this. Are you American? And the answer is yes, in fact. And no, in truth. And what's the truth? When you come back and submit to the entire laws of the empire, then then the truth is you are a Moor through your state. Until then, you're a protege, subject of the United States, which makes you a stateless Moor. I am that. Islam.